I've sent you two, a supplement to the, your packet that went out last week because I didn't have all of the, the numbers available last Thursday when we prepared this. So, I'll, I'll start with the supplement that I, I think Michael got to you yesterday. First of all, the numbers, in collections, we, for the month of May, collections were a hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and fourteen cents. This was an increase of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars over last year and results in an increase overall to date since October of five point four percent. So, actually, we're making up some of the, the off months that we, we saw occur earlier this year. Visitor centers, we saw thirty-three hundred and four visitors during, during July. So far, the centers have, since the beginning of the year, seen twenty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-two visitors. And our web traffic, we've launched several internet advertising campaigns directed at, at empty nesters and snowbirds for, obviously, for the fall and, and the winter period. Our web activity in July was up over seventy-four percent as compared to July of a year ago. This is a significant increase and we think it bodes well for the coming, the coming year. We attribute the increase to, in part, certainly to the new website we have, which went online a couple of months ago, as well as the digital campaigns that I mentioned on the advertising camp, I just mentioned about the snowbirds and the empty nesters. Our social media channels received a hundred and thirty-three thousand impressions in July and seventeen hundred and thirty-five engagements, and now we have ninety-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven social media followers. So, they get contacted on a very regular basis. As I mentioned before, a key function of our monthly promotional activities is our newsletter distribution. These publications are distributed to the email addresses we have harvested through our visitor centers and our nonprofit organizations. In July, we exceeded fifty thousand qualified email contacts that now receive our monthly newsletter that focuses on events and happenings throughout the county, as well as targeting future events and specials for the returning visitor. Since we know that sixty percent of our visitors are returning visitors, that's a significant market to get to. Also wanted to mention to you, we have, we've been doing a study, I've talked with you on several occasions about, over the, over the course of the years, we've looked to our, our collections and wondering why there's a differential between, you know, why, why things are down as opposed to being up in key months and why there seems to be something different than last year. We just began, over the last month or so, a study of VRBO listings in Franklin County. By September, I hope I'll be able to have an actual number of VRBO listings that are not part of any institutional managed program, that means to say, our local management companies. And, and the reason we're trying to locate these is, is that if they, if their, our properties are being rented by local management companies, nine times out of tens, we know and we're comfortable they're paying the resort tax. If these are individually owned and managed listings that can appear on VRBO, there's no way to tell whether they're paying the tourist tax or not, likely they're not, because a lot of people just open up their house and start renting it and don't, don't do what's required. So, we're in the process of identifying those. It's a, it's a lengthy process. VRBO does not provide that information, won't provide the information. So, we pretty much have to go listing by listing to make sure that we find all of those that are not now covered by one of our local management companies. So, as I say, I hope by September, I'll be able to report to you that we have identified this population and we will most likely begin sending letters to them as, you know, reminding them of their legal responsibility to register and, and pay tourist tax along with state sales tax. So, hopefully, that will improve our, you know, our collections and, and also improve the regulation of the, of some of these, some of these individual property owners. As far as the main, main report that I sent to you on Thursday, one of the things we thought you would want to see as soon as possible, since we're coming down to the end of fiscal year, are the vendor RFQs that you opened, I think it's the last meeting. Our board has reviewed the responses to the, the vendor RFQs for the four vendor categories that were, that included print media, internet and web, web production, TV airtime and production and local radio. And in my attachments, I provided you a, a copy of the, of the minutes of the, the grant review committee that, rather, the, I'm sorry, I've got my committees mixed up here, of the review committee that did, that looked over the RFQs for the four vendors. This does not include, of course, the administrative contract because that's being done separately. The scores got back. We, we basically took all of the applications. The, the, the applications had a, had a scoring mechanism included and our committee reviewed all of the applications. They scored them. We had a meeting at last, you know, the end of July. They brought their scores. We entertained comments from the applicants. The board members reviewed their scores and we tallied them and we've come up with the recommendations from the TDC board. In the internet and web services, we had two groups respond to the RFQ. One was a group called Designer at Large. They received three hundred points. The other was 2K Web Group. They received six hundred and ninety-five points. The board recommends that we extend negotiations with 2K Web Group. In print media category, Designer at Large, once again, you'll hear that name frequently. They, they applied under several categories. They're an out-of-area firm. They were not at the meeting, the review meeting. In print media, they scored four hundred points. Bay Media, who's the local provider, scored six hundred and ninety-five points and our board would recommend that we enter into negotiations with Bay Media. Local radio, Designer at Large scored two hundred and eighty-five points. Live Communications scored five hundred points and Oyster Radio scored six hundred and ninety points. And so, our board is recommending that we move ahead with negotiations with Oyster Radio. And local TV, airtime and production, Designer at Large scored, scored three hundred points. Full Moon Creative scored three hundred and seventy-five points and Forgotten Coast TV scored six hundred and ninety points. Forgotten Coast TV got the highest score and we're recommending that we enter into negotiations with Forgotten Coast TV. Those are the, the findings of the, from the four vendor contracts and we offer them to you for your consideration.
You have any comment?
I do not, Mr. Chairman. I mean, the process that y'all laid out was they would bring back to you their number one right to applicant, your, the board's decision now is either to accept or reject the recommendation from the TDC.
Pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones to approve the TDC board's recommendation. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Massie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
Commissioner, I think the, Commissioners, I think the next step is negotiations. I don't know that we have direction yet. Maybe we do about-
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we turn this, uh, turn the negotiations back over to the TDC, that's who's done it in the past, for negotiating out the contracts and everything.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you. Well, fortunately, we meet tomorrow, so we'll be able to consider going through that process. Next item is, members, we had, we received a notice at our last board meeting, which now was in June, that Board Member Chester Reese was going to be leaving the board. He is the recommended designee from the Carabelle Chamber and we have received a recommendation from the chamber for a replacement. They're wishing to replace Chester with Bob, Rob Prowess. Mr. Prowess has owned property in Franklin County for about eighteen years. He's a retiree of IBM. He and his wife live in the county. They've been involved with a number of nonprofit and fundraising efforts in Carabelle. He's a member of the Chamber of Commerce in Carabelle and also the CRA. He also meets the balance requirements of provider, lodging company versus those involved or interested in, in the hospitality industry, so that doesn't change any of our balance requirements, you know, under the statute. And so, we're offering this name up for your consideration, as I say. This is the recommendation from the, from the Carabelle Chamber. The TDC board is aware of it, but we don't normally get involved in that recommendation.
Pleasure to the board. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massie.
Thanks.
Second by Commissioner Sanders.
COW.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
Commissioners, I stand corrected, it's POWS.
P-O-W-I-S.
P-O-W-I-S. I apologize for that. And the final thing, I just wanted to kind of keep you up to date on, on what we were doing with the grant program, because I know you're, you're very interested in that. We presented to you back in June, I think, the, the outline of what we were doing with, with the grant program. We advertised for applicants for four categories of grants from the TDC. We received, well, they received about fifty applications. Our, our committee met last month, at the end of July, the twenty-fifth, I believe, and reviewed the applications to determine their, their consistency with the application requirements and had a good deal of discussion about, you know, what was appropriate and whether people feel, completed their, their application as necessary. The committee is recommending several things to our board for consideration tomorrow. In addition, there, I think, I don't think there was any surprise, I think we all expected that, because the program is, is different than it was last year, that there was a lot of questions raised by nonprofits and concerns. A group of those concerns were about the category dealing with museum grants and our board has scheduled a discussion for that tomorrow at our board meeting with some suggestions about how to correct some, some issues that were in the application that, that may need to be attended to. Several of the, several of the things that have arisen, I just want you to be aware so that if, in the event that you hear, our applications require that the organizations that submit the applications are 501(c) applications. That means that they're federally recognized nonprofit corporations. There was a typo in the application that said 501(c)(3), our board, our committee corrected that and, and the distinction is that most nonprofits are 501(c)(3), chambers are 501(c)(6) and it was always the intention of, of the board to include cha, the chambers in the, in the grant program. So, they've reworded the, the designation as a 501(c). There is some concern by some groups because that disqualifies them for receiving grants, but the 501(c) requirement is, is one that we've been doing for a, a number of years and it really is the way to, to verify that these organizations report regularly and their, you know, there's, there's disclosure and how much money they make and what their staff salaries are and all that sort of thing. So, the board has, has felt that that was an important requirement. We provide, we gave the, the committee gave the nonprofits two more weeks to update their information because it was a pretty quick process and we wanted everybody to have enough time to do, to provide us the information that was requested. The match requirement is something that you and I've talked about. Our board has talked about a sense extensively. There's, there's a match requirement in, in all four grant categories. This is something new to, to the, some of the organizations. The board, the committee has suggested that, and the board will deal tomorrow with a recommendation that originally the wording in the application was you had to match every dollar that you got from the grant for promotion with a dollar that you provided from your own organization for promotion. And this, for some of the smaller organizations, was, was a significant burden if they only had a five thousand dollar program that, you know, to require that they come up with, you know, a total of four thousand in promotion dollars made it difficult for them. So, our board, our committee and our board tomorrow will hear a recommendation that that match be based on their total budget rather than the money, just the money that they spend on promotion and that makes it a lot more tenable for the nonprofits. It's a, it's a, a policy that the board has recommended for a year. They eventually want, because this is, you know, TDCs are all about promotion, they want the, the nonprofits to focus on, you know, being able to get buy-in by the community, be able to raise other monies and also, you know, increase their promotional activities. And, and the committee also is recommending tomorrow that applications from organizations be limited to one per event. We had several applications for, four, five applications for the same event. The board, you know, felt pretty strongly that that should be limited. In any event, our next meeting, of course, will be tomorrow. A grants committee will finish their work on August twenty-second and have their recommendations on the grants back to our board in September. And of course, we'll have a, we're scheduled to have a special board meeting on August twenty-ninth to review the applications for the TDC administrative position. And that's my report. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to-
Any questions from the board members?
I thought we were going to handle that.
What's that? The, we're not even dealing with that.
No, he said they were having a meeting.
What's that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
They're having a regular scheduled TDC meeting tomorrow.
No, he, he said they were having, late on in the month.
Yeah, there's a meeting, a special meeting. We're, we're expecting, because I think that's what we understand you wanted us to do. When you get your, when you get your applications in for the administrative position, I, I think we're thinking you'll open them, you'll refer them to the TDC, they'll refer them and send you the top three. If that's still your desire, then we have a special meeting scheduled. You don't want to do it that way, that's-
We pulled a hammer.
We are, actually. They make a recommendation, Mr. Miller. They're going to recommend the top three for us to-
Oh, 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 that's like if we get five or six and they'll recommend the top.
Right, right. Right.
Because y'all did say you're going to the three. Okay.
It's still going to wind up with us.
Yeah, that's all right.
We'll make the decision.
We should have our review it before it happens.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments, Mr. Blair? Thank you, Kirk, for coming in today.
Thanks, Lon.
We got a big agenda that we need to move.
Yeah, before you move on, if I may, I know Mr. Fetchick will not take more than maybe five, ten minutes maybe, and then, and the clerk, she has two, three minutes, and then, before we go to Mr. Pierce, it seems like you have most of your contractors here, so we'll do that, let him transition over to the armory while we finish the meeting and then we'll leave them there.
Okay.
Sounds okay?
Let me just say this, Mr. Chairman, on Mr. Fetchick, he came before the TDC on an economic development type situation and I did not feel comfortable with the TDC discussing it before the board even, this board even knew anything about it. So, this is the reason why he's here, okay? Just wanted you to know.
State your name for the record, please.
Richard Fetchick, Appalachia Regional Planning Council. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me here to speak. As you know, the Regional Planning Council is committed to continually searching for planning and economic development avenues by which we can support our counties, which Franklin County is one. And so, the Economic Development Administration has made funding available for all kinds of pursuits under the disaster supplemental category. And working with county staff over the past several months, I have been developing a proposal that we look at economic development strategies for the county that involve data and some outreach. I understand that the county has engaged with economic development planning in the past and don't simply want to rehash what has been done. However, I think that strategic planning is something that is continually renewed. We have to revisit it, ask ourselves how is the economy changing and how are we responding to that through workforce development, entrepreneurship support, supportive local businesses and otherwise, you know, meeting the needs of today. So, we have a proposal that I and Franklin County staff have collaboratively developed and are ready to submit the application to EDA. There is a match required and the RPC will commit four thousand and essentially our ask is to help close that gap. We're asking for the last four thousand from the county.
As I, as I understand it, I think there's a forty thousand dollar grant that you're also receiving, which we do have to have a match for. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's a fifty thousand dollar ask in total, of which we are responsible, the RPC, for, for raising twenty percent, so ten thousand, and we have commitments from the cities for a thousand apiece.
You got a comment?
I was, I support this application, you know, as, you know, our county's changing, our economic development, you know, horizon is shifting tremendously. We rejoin opportunity Florida. ARPC is, is trying to assist us also with economic diversification. So, I think we need to pursue all avenues, including the four, four thousand dollars to, to see if we can get our future, you know, bright and available to everybody, sort of the economic diversity.
And, what Commissioner Sanders was talking about, they came to TDC and made a presentation before it came to this board. And the way I understand it, that we were going to direct TDC to expend four thousand dollars to help us with, generate the funds for this match.
And Curtis Shaggy said yes.
As it relates to this study that we're doing here. And they're not only doing it for this county, they're doing it for a few different counties, correct?
We, we are providing economic development planning services to other counties, but Franklin is the, you know, in the spotlight of, of the EDA funding. You're my main focus, if it's not there.
And with the, Mr. Chairman, also, with the ten thousand, Richard, we're potentially doing, ARPC's doing four.
That's correct.
The county through TDC funds are doing four.
Mm-hmm.
And both of our cities are doing a thousand.
Correct.
That's what we're looking at.
Yes, sir.
Pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next, we wanted to take the Madam Clerk.
I don't have anything for action this morning, Mr. Chairman.
I did, I did see where you announced your dates for the different closings for the upcoming fiscal year. And after that, would be, where did we wrong go? We wanted to skip down to the presentation of plaques, because we have a lot of people sitting here to, to receive the plaques that are being presented on behalf of the people of East Point, on behalf of the people and the Boulder County Commissioners here in Franklin County. I'd like to say we are very appreciative of your efforts on behalf of the people that were burned out and there's so many people to mention, so many people gave, willingly gave to help these, this people devastated by the fire to recuperate and start moving forward. And we are very, on behalf of the board, we are very grateful that, that you people were able to come and participate and help these people move forward. As I said, they got a long road ahead of them, but, you know, we had to get the properties cleaned up. There were a lot of people out there directing traffic. There's numerous ways that the community come together, state, state agencies, local businesses, everybody come together to make this a reality for the people over there and it's going to take a long time for the recovery, but we did begin the process and we're very grateful for everybody that helped out on that, on that end and to that endeavor to make it, make it work for everybody.
And mostly Commissioners, you know, today, we have some plaques here that we're going to, Whitney's going to hand to you and you, we honor each contractor, or in this case, the city of Tallahassee also, that I mean, they just stopped what they were doing, you know. As a matter of fact, the first one goes to Mr. Mike Kates, who can't be here this morning because he fell behind on his, on all the other work that he had already contracted to do that. So, you know, I'll just accept the plaque on his behalf today and I'll pass it on to him. He really apologizes that he couldn't be here, but it's kind of catch-up time for him right now.
Mike, I think the process would be to call the-
Each one?
Each one up individually. I would ask the board to stand and I'll present it to them here in front, but I'd like to have the board behind me, as this is a collaborative effort on behalf of the board.
And I want to give all the Commissioners a chance to look at these. Whitney did an excellent job, so.
I'll move forward and make the announcement, but I would like the board to stand so that we're all in on TV or in pictures that might be taken, because this is a board effort here.
Okay, so we're looking for the representative from Coastline Clearing and Development. There we go. There you go, sir.
Should have got my glasses. Here, you need to-
You want me to read what it says?
I'm good.
Sir? Want to read what it says?
Yes, if you don't mind, Mike.
It said, "On behalf of those affected by the Lime Rock Fire, the board of county commissioners would like to express our sincere gratitude in the efforts of the disaster recovery. We thank you." Next, representative from Jason White Construction. So glad he didn't bring that big truck here today, boy. They brought some big trucks.
And, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, once we get everybody done with the plaque, I'd like to have a big picture of everybody also.
Yeah. Come on up, Mr. White. On behalf of the board of county commissioners and all the citizens in Franklin County, we appreciate your help in the recovery effort. If you turn around, that's just the end of the board.
Next, we're looking for the representative from Robertson Roberts.
I will speak, Mr. Greg Ryan. Andy Bailey and George was not able to be here today. Andy had a tragedy and his family's dealing with.
And prayers are with him.
Greg is here on behalf of, he's been to the board meetings, he's definitely the board and a lot of the cases. He's the next man in line. On behalf of the board and the representatives of East Point, Florida, Franklin County, we appreciate all your help in the recovery efforts to help these people get started moving forward. Thank you.
Let's see how you're going to handle this one. The next one was a very big group, the city of Tallahassee.
I want to extend our appreciation as how much everybody tripped in and became a part of our little county community's family and helped these citizens and helped us, you know, get back to where some sort of sense of normalcy in their lives. So, thank you so much for everything that y'all have done and all the volunteer and all the time that you donated for us.
Thank you.
I don't know if you really realize how much the impact y'all made on these people in East Point, Florida, by coming and helping. Let me not get emotional on this, but we do appreciate your help. And without your help, we still be recovering. So, thank y'all very much.
You're going down to get glamour to get your-
We promised not to bite. Hey, Mr. John.
Hey. How you doing? Y'all doing a good job. Really.
Mr. Chairman, I have to say, all of it affects my heart, but when I saw the trucks rolling that morning from Tallahassee to help Lilo to East Point, I mean, that just floored me, floored me. So, everybody, it's just a, a operation of trying to get people back in their homes and y'all did it. Y'all did it.
We're very glad the majority of y'all waited until today.
Yeah.
We do appreciate it. The people appreciate it. On behalf of people of Franklin County, thank you, Canada.
Sure.
Yeah, we're going over to eat.
We're going to eat. Y'all stay there.
Yeah, y'all don't stay, we're going over to eat.
Y'all stay.
Oh, yeah, that's, we'll get to that in a second.
Michael, tell them what we're going to eat.
Yeah, don't disappear yet, everybody. There's a luncheon for y'all too, so, and that's on behalf of the-
And Miss Cheryl made her famous pound cake.
Yes.
That's all I did.
Commissioner Sanders made her pound cake. So, that's first come, first served basis. All right, next is a representative from Sap Brothers Contracting. Sap Brothers?
New one, not yet.
I don't see none, Michael.
Real quick, they, they were helping remove some of the pine trees that were interfering with the recovery process. So, this, I'll take their Sap Brothers contract and their log and dump. They tell them to help remove some of the trees after, after the recovery effort was done, so we want to recognize them also for their contribution in the recovery effort for East Point and Franklin County.
Yes. I can, if you know, Mike, could you, what? Could you, Tras, explain what Mr. Kates, Mike Kates did? I'm sorry, put you in a spot like that, but he gave him a lot of time also to reconnection.
Mike Kates- Mike Kates worked diligently to get seven, I mean, like, all of our power poles set and hooked up with RV receptacles so to ensure that these people actually got, had power when they moved, put the lot on there, put the trailer on there. But they, he's worked like tirelessly. Every time I call him, he, within a day, he's got it up and running for us. So, I appreciate all he donates to us, so.
He's an electrical contractor that, that made sure that power was done right and kind of do it. I mean, as you know, is when you're hooking up a trailer or some of the permanent on that they hooked up, it has to be wired up into the box inside the trailer and all that has to be inspected before the power can actually be turned on. These are some of the services that are provided, along with the power pole installation for the temporary housing. Mike's been a part of our community for a long time and done a very well job, a very good job for these people and we also appreciate his effort.
Okay, thank you so much. That's B and B Pavers. Anyone here from B and B Pavers? Because they help smooth a lot of the parking lots and Tris on there too.
They actually come in after recovery effort and actually smoothed out the lots where these cameras could be pulled in, kind of leveled them up some so everything that's set up needs to jack up and get leveled up so they, they also make contributions on behalf of the people in East Point. And again, Franklin, on behalf of the board and the people of Franklin County, we're very proud to have everybody that came in and helped with the recovery process and made, and made it a little simpler for these people because these people were down, they lost everything they had. And we appreciate everybody's effort to help them recover and start moving forward. Thank you all again.
And I said last one, I saw Joey Toronto look at me a little funny, so it really and truly, Florida Forestry Service.
About Florida forestry.
And Tris, you could explain what they did while they did this.
So, not only did they help combat the fire and, and assist in saving the homes that were saved, they actually also, we called them to assist us to move all the travel trailers onto the lots. And that was something that they did extra and that's not in their scope of work, so we appreciate everything that y'all do for us and everything that you do for our county.
You're accepted on behalf, thank, thank you for coming this morning. We do appreciate their efforts and, and you know, what's collaborative effort amongst a lot of different agencies and a lot of different local contractors, people that were not local contractors came in, such as the city of Tallahassee, R and R Construction, Robertson Roberts. So, it was a collaborative effort amongst a bunch of people to, to respond to the disaster that happened over there. And on behalf of the Boulder County Commissioners, the people of East Point, Florida, and the people of Franklin County, again, we'd like to extend our sincere appreciation to the vision of forestry and the help that was provided to help these people recover. And again, we appreciate it.
I, I just want to mention, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, these are my boys right here. They take care of Miss Cheryl in the forest. I'm telling you, if, if you've ever had the experience of having a wildfire, these are the guys on the front line. And I'm telling you, when I saw the picture of the tractor, y'all get me upset, you know that, turned over with Richard in it, I'm telling you, because he hit that hole and took the tractor out, that didn't worry them, they wouldn't have even done this. But I want to recognize somebody, Mr. Chris Colber, who is a forestry supervisor, could not be here today because the forestry family last week lost one of their own. They lost Mr. John Brown. He was a program, land acquisition programs manager there, had worked there for over 25 years. He was a son of Appalachia Cola in Franklin County and today is his funeral. And he was instrumental working with me and other ones back in the 1990s and early 2000s to get Takes Hell Forest in here. So, this is what those guys managed. They managed that 2,005, 205,000 acres of Takes Hell Forest. But I just wanted, I would be remiss if I did not recognize John Brown because he was instrumental. That's the reason why we got these guys in here. And I, I just want to say that. So, when you say your prayers this afternoon at 2:30, they'll, they'll be giving full military rite at the funeral for John, up here at the Magnolia Cemetery. And so, y'all just say a prayer for him. But guys, so many times y'all watched my back and I want to tell you, I appreciate that. And I'm still going to be, I may not be a Commissioner very much longer, but I'm still going to be living in them woods, so I'm still looking out for you.
Thank you all again.
Do you want everybody up for a real picture? I hope you said that earlier.
We can stand here and then they can come in. Can you, hey, David, can you get it?
They gotta be all.
Did they come in here?
Yeah.
Well, some of them can come up over here too. Come on.
Yeah, yeah, kneel him, that's a good idea. Sit down there. That's a good idea.
Look at him. Come on, forestry sitting there on the front, hey, sprint. Get him on the front road, come on.
Oh, he wants to take a picture.
I'll be taking a story. Okay, sweep in, guys. There we go. There we go, that's good, come on.
Cheryl, Cheryl, just go a little bit to that side.
Yep.
Right, smoking now, you go a little bit to that side. Yep, perfect. There we go. Take a few.
You're the friend, you can do it.
All right, Tris and Jennifer, could you direct them to the armory where we pretty much will have, as soon as we get through it already, we'll be serving lunch, but you guys can go there and enjoy whatever refreshments they have up until then. And just show them where the armory is. Once again, you guys, thank you so much.
Everyone, thanks again.
Yeah.
No. We're cutting the...
Next on the agenda would be Mr. Alan Pearce on the store coordinator report.
We already done one of the items, the longest item I reported, the rest is pretty straightforward. Item number one, Algadore Point Road update. Dewberry Engineers have continued to meet with state and federal agencies regarding the Algadore Point Road reconstruction. At this time, four separate permits are being requested by the various agencies, an FDEP stormwater permit and FDEP road construction permit, building to see where the coastal control line, and FDEP permit for coastal armory to see where the coastal control line and below mean high water, and US Army Corps of Engineers permit for coastal armory below mean high water. The last two permits are a function of the county installing a vertical sheet pile to protect the road. Each permit has its own review process. I mentioned this as the public's aware, this is a very complicated project, being complicated not by county rules, but by state and federal rules. And we are having to be, go through each and every one of these review processes as if they're a separate application, even though they're for the same road and the same 1,100 feet section of the road. It's very, I won't say, well, I'll say disappointing because there, there's been no shortcuts, no, no allowances given for an emergency repair. It has to go through a standard permitting situation and that's what we're forced to do. And so, we're going through that. It's now August of 2018. I hope to be done with the permitting and the, and agency review and all the comments associated with it, you know, sometime this year for construction start in 2019. But I wish I could short-circuit it, but we are not allowed by law to short-circuit it. We, we have to have a permit from the state and the federal government because we're trying to put that, we're, we're pushing the road back south, back into the ocean where there used to be land that all got washed away. We're pushing it all south and that takes federal and state agencies' approval and there's just no way getting around it.
One of, I've been sitting up here for 20 years saying, you ain't, you're not going to win the battle with Mother Nature. She gonna take it.
And, and that, that kind of addresses the public comment we had earlier about why it's taken so long and it's been two years and all this. Well, this is, these are some of the things that the board has to go through and there's nothing we can do about it. We have to follow protocol and procedures, so.
And one of the things that people who don't, who, and it's frustrating to say this because it just seems illogical, but one of the things we have to go through is, is prove that the sea turtle, that by, by pushing the roads south, we're not interfering with sea turtle nesting habitat. Only anybody who lives in Algadore Point knows that there's no sea turtles in that 1,100 feet. There's no beach there. But yet, we have to go through a process that has a 90-day review process to make sure that sea turtles aren't impacted by this reconstruction. That's what it is. I mean, those are federal laws and they haven't been changed yet. Okay, item number two, consortium update. The consultants for the consortium sent out an email saying the governor submitted the State Expenditure Plan, or SEP, to the Gulf Council for review on July 27. The council can take up to six days for review. The consultants are hoping to have an update on the SEP at the next consortium meeting, but they are not sure if that will happen. The SEP does include all the county's projects, building a new EOC, dredging East Point two-mile channels, and funds for an Oyster Recovery Project. Number three, Triumph Update. The Triumph staff continues to go through the backlog of submitted projects, but there's no timeline for when staff recommendations will come out. I have talked to staff and I hope the county will hear about its armory project application either the August or September meeting. I did not ask about the status of city or school board projects, but they are also in the review process. Triumph staff is still also developing an Oyster Recovery Project that will be funded with Triumph Funds. One of the components that still need to be worked out is the connection between Triumph Funds and the creation slash retention of jobs. As the board is aware, Triumph is all about economic development. In order for Triumph Funds to be spent and to avoid a clawback situation, Triumph has to be satisfied of the number of jobs that are going to be created if Triumph Funds are provided. FSU, the University of Florida, and representatives of the Oyster industry have been meeting to put together an Oyster Recovery Plan. The Triumph staff is aware that Franklin County has requested SEP funds for an Oyster Recovery Project, so it is possible that those two funding sources would be used for one project. But the board, I say this to you all, the board will have to agree to that before it happens. At this point, the Triumph staff is meeting with representatives, you know, we're being informed of the meetings, we haven't, the county has not been asked to participate necessarily. Triumph staff, as you, or the Triumph Board, as you know, really promotes economic development through, through, you know, enterprise and the industry itself, not through local government, you know, direction. So, we are going to see what the industry comes up with. It may be the two projects are merged, maybe they're not, we just don't know yet. Last item for me then is number four, because we already done number five, Restore Update. As the board is aware, we have, we have held up developing our plan to use the Restore Funds until we saw what was going to be funded by Triumph. The cities were agreement in this strategy because if projects were not funded by Triumph but still had public value, then it is possible those projects could be funded through Restore. The county had a planning grant from the US Treasury to pay for the development of the MYIP, and the MYIP is essentially a list of projects to be funded by Restore and the Treasury has to approve the MYIP. The county had selected Dewberry Engineers to assist in the MYIP development. I've had several conversations with Treasury, Treasury staff over the months that we have had been working, I'm sorry. I have had several conversations with Treasury staff over the months that we have had, that we have been working on Triumph projects, on when the county would get back to Restore. Because there was no timeline for Triumph, I could not give Treasury a timeline. Consequently, Treasury has decided that it will issue an, that it will not issue an extension of our planning grant, which expired July 31, 2018. The expiration of our planning grant means that the county does not have funds to continue to pay Dewberry for any more work on the MYIP. I had put Dewberry on hold when we started working on Triumph. We had a $350,000 contract with them and paid them about $150,000 for the work they did. Planning grant funds that are not used will still be available to county in, either in the form of another planning grant or in the form of construction funds if in fact we don't need $200,000 to finish the MYIP. Since Treasury has become more efficient in its guidance, I am estimating it will take no more than $50,000 of planning effort to finish the MYIP. So, the county is ahead by letting the, the planning grant expire. My continued recommendation to the board is that we finish the Triumph process and see where we stand with project before we restart the MYIP. In order for all our, or all our governmental entities to have the time to get responsive Triumph, I recommend the board revisit the MYIP in January. I have discussed the Dewberry contract with Mr. Schuer. The contract allows the county to cancel with 30 days notice, but Dewberry has not been doing any work for the contract the last six months. I have sent Dewberry notice of cancellation and have copied Mr. Schuer. And in fact, Dewberry, since that meeting, it's part of your packet, has confirmed by email that they accept the cancellation and are not expecting any more payment. So, we are done, we are out of Dewberry contract with the planning grant. Let's just see what happens with Triumph and then we can revisit this issue in January. And I think that way, Commissioners, all the communities, the cities and the county who have spent time and effort on Triumph Funds, if they aren't funded, then maybe those projects will be reworked and done to restore. But you all would be controlled to have that submission, but everybody's worked hard on some of these applications, so let's just see what gets funded and what doesn't get funded.
Mr. Chairman, and just to remind the board, remember that the consortium, the Gulf Consortium that we're a member of, they do not see any money coming down for the part, their part, until April.
Of 2019, yeah, yeah.
2019, April may have been a little longer than that.
On this, let me just conclude by saying that yesterday, Congress and, Neil Dunn was in the, in the county and I met with Neil Dunn, some of the Commissioners over in East Point, met with him, and we talked about the East Point channel. The US Army, Army Corps of Engineers is working on, they have the permit in hand, it's their permit, even though they, they got it on behalf of Franklin, but they own the permit and therefore they control the timing of when it's done because they're going to hire the contractor. They have contacted me saying that they hope to have some funds available. They don't know if they have enough funds, they're, the Congress is working on some things. So, I offered and told them that also in the SEP, we have dredging funds and so for the Corps to, you know, get their plans together, let us find out much money they have and we'll contribute money if we have to to get that project moving. I mean, it's permitted, it's ready to go, we just need $3 million.
It's been permitted for years.
It's been permitted for years.
But we don't know a timeline.
We do not know a timeline.
So, whenever you're talking to this, when Commissioners are talking with the public outside of the meeting, there it, it's not happening tomorrow. We don't know when it's happening. So, don't make promises that you can't keep, what I'm trying to reiterate. It's supposed to be funding, we ain't seen no funding, but, you know, we're working on it, but when it's going to happen, we don't know.
At least, at least it's being worked on.
Yes.
You got a comment?
Yeah, oh, did they say anything about the channel on the two mile?
Well, the, the conversation I had with the Corps was that if we can, that, that, that yes, they're going to, they're going to start the permitting process of the two-mile channel. The two-mile channel is a much simpler project because it's an uplands disposal area we already have there, it just need to be cleaned out. So, getting, they're going to work on that permit. In a perfect world, we dredge the two-mile channel, then move over, dredge the, I'm sorry, we dredge the East Point channel first and then move over and dredge the two-mile channel in a perfect world. But getting that two-mile application is pretty simple and the guy told me that and they are going to start working on that.
And, and they can use all these spool site that we've got.
They can. We have to re, we have to refurbish, we have to get all that muck out of there.
Yeah.
Yes, it can be reused.
Get some work on the walls.
It's still permitted.
A little bit of rehab, but other than that, we should be good.
Yes.
And you, as everybody's aware, we, we put the East Point channel in our consortium project, the SEP plan that Alan was just talking about, and if the Corps has money for East Point, then we can move that money over to Appalachia.
Right.
And maybe get them both done, that's what he's referring to. We don't know.
I know in the consortium, we got $6.6 million, somewhere around $6.6 million allocated for the dredging.
Right, both, both up together, that's correct.
The both projects, yeah.
Or maybe, maybe, maybe the timing will all work where we can get everything done because this over here is feeling in real bad and East Point's been feeling bad for years, so.
Oh, we could have been faster with it, though.
Yeah. Hopefully, we do a little faster. We'll, we'll have a better idea, certainly by April of 2019, when the SEP money's going to free up and hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll get this consolidated. But let me just tell the public, and I told the Commissioners this yesterday, so one of the things that's changed on the East Point channel is that the Corps of Engineers has come back and revisited the way they're going to put the disposal out there. It's going to be better, but in case the public isn't aware, the East Point channel, the material will be built, will be put behind the breakwater, so right now you have, especially on, I say on the, on the west end in front of Lynn Seafood, there's a nice vegetated area. That'll be expanded to have more spool put back and a bigger marsh area will be built[1671.31] and a bigger marsh area will be built on the backside. So it'll hopefully look like a natural harbor with a nice defined channel coming through.
So it's been 30, 40 years since that thing been driven in.
Uh, it's 1985. So 32, 33 years, yeah.
I remember it been that long.
Is that all you got, Alan?
Yes, sir.
Do the board members have anything for Alan? We'll move down the agenda. Next would be Mr. Michael Marone. And the coordinator.
Good morning, again. Item number one, board action to authorize the chairman's signature on the resolution and application for the removal of derelict vessel in East Point Channel. The grant amount is $2,925. The county's 25% match, which will be paid from voting, the voting improvement fund is $975, which brings a total project cost of $3,900.
Same move.
Same.
We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Massie, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, Mr. Clay Kennedy of Dewberry has finalized a change order to create a direct access to the Chapman Building from Highway 98 here in Appalachia Cola. As the board is aware, the Chapman Building is owned by the county. However, we are basically landlocked because access to the building is either across property owned by the city of Appalachia Cola or the school district. The change order calls for the opening of 13th Street in front of the Chapman Building by robbers and robbers. And in anticipation of this project, I was able to get the sheriff's work crew to remove the fence from in front of the building along Highway 98 and get Mr. Neighbors' work crew to remove, I meant, to remove a tree base that is in the same area. This project will be paid from the paving fund repair and maintenance line item. Board action to authorize the chairman's signature on that change order.
So move. We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
I don't even think that before they.
Complete the opening. Clay is asking how long you think the project will be once we start to move forward?
Two months to have it complete.
Yeah, so we'll be into school.
Thank you, Clay.
Thank you, sir. Item number three, inform the board. Mr. Kennedy of Dewberry has submitted the Northwest Florida Management District exemption and the Florida Department of Transportation driveway connection permit that will allow direct access to the jail's lift station from Highway 65. As the board may recall, it became necessary for the sheriff to install additional security fencing at the jail to reduce the introduction of contraband. The installation of this additional security fence interfered with access to the lift station. It was agreed at a previous meeting that the county would pay for the permit fees. East Point Ward and Sewer District will build the access road from Highway 65 to the lift station and the sheriff would install security fencing around the lift station when informed by East Point Ward and Sewer District to do so. All necessary agencies are aware that staff has received the exemption and the permit. So we are moving forward with that project.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a note while we're on this. We also, as part of that district, as soon as that access road's done, we're changing that lift station, we're updating that lift station.
And at that point, the sheriff will then install this defense once you guys have changed out the lift station. Yes, sir. Item number four, the last meeting, the board made a motion to advertise for RFPs for county property and auto insurance along with engineering services. Ms. Griffith, Assistant Finance Officer, thinks it's too close to the renewal date of October 1st for 2018-19 property and insurance coverage and recommends that the board consider this advertisement during the spring of 2019. Is the board willing to amend the motion or just defer this motion until next year? Discussion and action.
Who made the motion?
I did. Well, I just don't take it back, man. Back there.
Who made the second?
I did.
Commissioner Sanders, there.
So you want to take, take back the previous motion in the previous meeting, Mr. Lockley?
Yeah, later we.
Yeah, she's just saying it's too close.
Mr. Sanders says she will rescind her second.
Okay.
You said you rescinded.
Do you have a second? She didn't do that, I'm sorry, sir.
I got lost in the conversation. I thought we were, the board's, you're, Commissioner Lockley, you're going to make a motion to rescind your motion from last meeting? And Commissioner Sanders, you second, and you're willing to support that? Well, then the, the action would be a motion to rescind the motion from, I forget the day of the meeting, 7/17 or something like that.
Yes, sir, you're right.
That, now, the motion was compound to do two things, in, insurance and engineering. So you're, you're rescinding the entire motion, Mr. Lockley?
Yeah.
Okay.
I get that, because if, hey, if he rescinds his motion, then.
So we have a motion in the second.
The record reflected the motion has been made to rescind. Previous motion and the second has been rescinded also.
There's more action on that decision.
And any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, uh, thank you. Next item, uh, we did item five already. Item six, more information. Ms. Lisa Lance, your library director, recently advertised for two vacant full-time positions. One for the East Point branch and the other for the Caravel branch. After reviewing the Caravel branch schedule, she decided to revert back to two part-time positions so that she could adequately staff that branch for the six days they're open. She will keep the full-time position in East Point. Ms. Lance will contact all applicants and inform them of the change. So basically at Caravel, you'll have two part-times and the current full-time. So they have three employees there. And then over in East Point, you'll have two full-time employees. That's how it was before, before she came and asked you to convert the two part-times to full-time.
I know if I can't understand why she's pushing so hard for a full-time, then I want to go back to two part-times we pushed to make it a full-time. I don't understand it.
I, I'm sorry.
Let me get through. Because the weekend on a Saturday, East Point doesn't open on Saturday, Caravel does. They do not really have that many people on Saturday there to, you know what I'm saying? It's open from 10 to 2. Because if we, if we go back to taking these two part-times, we never going to probably get another, get a full-time position back. We fought for two years trying to get it.
Yeah. I asked her, and she said, I said, well, do you have to open on Saturdays? She said, yes, it's busy, nothing Caravel to open on Saturdays. And that's why, you know, I'm like, I, I mean, that's her department, so it's not much for me to say, you know. Yeah, you know.
But I just don't understand why she wants to get rid of the full-time position and two part-time positions.
Because the flexibility, and that was my concern when she.
Flexibility with the two part-times versus the full-time is more flexibility?
Yes. And if you remember when she first came to the board about that, making that switch, Commissioner Lockley had that concern and so did I. I'm like, well, you sure you want to do that? Because you have to cover for six days, you know? And she's like, that's what she wanted then, so.
Okay.
But I was.
What I, what I don't want to happen is her do this and then in mid-strain decides, well, it don't work and then she comes back and wants that too. But, I mean.
What's she asking for now?
She's not really asking, she's just basically informing the board what she's doing.
I mean, she just going to drop it.
She, if I may, she's going back to what it was originally. It's what it is, yes. Oh, I think Ms. Aguirre is, is Chair of the, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, yeah.
You have to comment during the public comment period.
Old habits, I'm sorry, okay. Item number seven, did he leave already? No, he's still back there, good. Ms. Lori Switzer, your ship administrator, has informed me that of September 30th, there will be three vacancies on the county's housing board. All of the members on this board have served for at least 11 years. Districts one, four, and five seats are or will be vacant by September 30th. And Mr. Skip Frank, District two, and Robert Davis, District three, will remain on the board. Housing board meets once a quarter and since Reverend John Sink, his last date will be September 30th, you should have replacements in place no later than the second meeting in September.
So one, four, and five, commissioners are one, four, and five.
And Mr., and Mr. Sink is here and he has served from day one on that board and, you know. Yes.
And we appreciate your service.
Yes. And I'm sure at the next meeting, you probably guys will directly send a letter of appreciation to each of the members that are stepping up once we find their replacement. So you, those three districts, the hunt is on to find replacements for them. They meet once a, once a quarter, I do believe. So it's not like they have to attend a monthly meeting or anything like that. So that helps. Number eight, last week, the sheriff's office notified staff that the deadline for submitting the application for the Edward Byrne Assistance Grant Program was August 3rd. It appears that, that this revised deadline was due to a change at the state level. Ask Attorney Schuler to review the application and the other documents before presenting them to the chairman's signature. Board action to ratify the chairman's signature on the application.
Same move. We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? As, as Mike stated here, that was something that come up in between board meetings. So it was already signed by the chairman to get this grant money. We're, we're always like, to get some money. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Unfortunately, we have a meeting with three weeks in between the three, the two meetings. That's what, that happens from time to time. And we did number nine already. And number 10, staff was notified by the National Forest Service in Florida of the availability of the big gully analysis area environmental assessment for a 30-day notice and comment. The comment, the comment period began on July 25th and ends on August 24th. I gave you the project's webpage. If you'd like, after looking at that, if you'd like to send any comments, you let me know and I will send them into the forestry. And that ends my report.
Any, any comments or anything from the board members to Mr. Marone?
I got something I want to bring up, Mr. Chairman. Back in 2016, the Secretary of USDA appointed me to the Southern Region Recreation Assessment Committee. That's for the national, national forests to do assessments on the feed and the feed changes and stuff. My, um, my appointment is going to be out in September 15th. And I would like for this board to support me on being appointed back to that position. And I would have to have a motion by the board to ask for reappointment to the Southern Region Recreation Assessment Committee.
I make the motion. We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Massie, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
And if that's it, Mr. Solomon should be here in the background. Oh, I'm sorry, John, I didn't see you back there, okay. I know we have Attorney Schuler to go, I just wanted to make sure John was.
So I got to get back, get back in my cooking clothes.
And John, before you begin, Commissioner, I want to let you guys know. When we, you guys talked about this, this appreciation, first we were going to do it in the evening, then Whitney and I talked, we decided to do a luncheon. And the first person that came to mind was John and I walked over to his office, Whitney and I. I said, John, okay, I need some help. And I explained what we wanted to do. And I said, okay, John, I'm going to tell you, this is the county, so we have no money. So you got to tell me what I need to do, how I can, he said, don't worry about a thing, I got it. And only thing he's asked for is basically a head count. Nothing else. So I really, really appreciate John doing this today because this is very important to the people, the people that volunteered and helped. Okay, I didn't mean to steal the thunder, but I have to give you the thanks for what you did.
Well, I really appreciate Michael asking me. Anytime I get to cook is a good thing. So just went to a barbecue school last weekend, so maybe I learned a little something. I wanted to thank Michael for asking us to do it at that, at the Chamber of Commerce and Timfo Barbecue to be able to provide this lunch for everybody that was responsible for the disaster recovery efforts. The Lime Rock Fire, the lunch will be at the Armory, little afternoon. Whenever y'all get done, that's when it'll be ready. I've got everything prepared. I want to add thanking my staff that's there working right now while I'm not there. And also Jerry Hall from Up the Creek, Bev Hewitt from the Seafood Grill, and especially Lee Macklemore. When I went to him and Michael went to him, he was like, tell me what you need and we'll take care of it later on. So they, I mean, they were, they jumped right on everything as soon as they could to help y'all. One thing I do want to say is I want to express my gratitude for being able to live in this community, in this county, because you as the board went above and beyond for our citizens this past month or two. I mean, that was just remarkable. You don't see that in large cities and other places, but a small community like this, every one of y'all stepped up right away and helped the people of this community. And that's, that's a blessing to be able to live here, so. But I do want to invite y'all and everybody else over to the Armory. Whenever you get done, we'll be ready. And, uh, and thank y'all for letting us do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Y'all have a good one.
Next on the agenda, we go back, it would be Mr. Michael Schuler, County Attorney, report.
Commissioner, the first item on my report for action and consideration by the board is the public comment policy that I initially presented to you. I guess it's been a few weeks back. And I sent it out to you in its final draft form last Friday. Does the board have any questions for me or any instructions on how you want to proceed with this presentation?
I have one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
About this policy. And I, I don't know if I'm misreading, but it is a question I ran across last night when I was doing it. Under subheading C, action by the board will be taken on agenda items at the time shown, the agenda or sooner or after is possible. Note that anywhere I was at. Here's another, oh, I'll go down a little bit further. Matters known on the agenda that are brought up by the commissioners, such as, what I'm thinking, when I'm asking this question to is like I did today with the oil collection units. During the meeting shall be placed on a future agenda for action by the board if, if a majority of the board approves. I'm just, I'm wanting to make sure I'm understanding, I'm reading, like what I brought up today, we'd have had to have waited, gone on another meeting if, if we approved this as it's written.
If you approve it as written, that's correct. Commissioner Jones, the original draft had, had an alternative language. It had this language and it also had a provision where the board could amend the agenda and then bring up that new subject matter and then take public comment. So I think y'all can do that in one, either one of those two facets, but you'd have to do it in one or the other. And I certainly can, if you would like, I can amend this draft to allow you the, the flexibility to do one or the other.
Right, okay.
I go along with Mr. Jones. I think if you bring something up in the meeting and they don't know what's going on, they done had their time to speak, they can't speak again. If you do it at the end of the meeting and they can speak on what we spoke of.
No, you have to.
You do it at that.
If you take an item that is not on the agenda and if the board makes a motion to take that item up, then you have to allow for additional public comment.
Okay, at that time.
Yes.
We're going to try not, the board should try not to bring up additional non-agenda items. You remember a while back, Mr. Lockley had to make a motion to put it on next week's, or the next meeting's agenda?
Mr. Bird.
Right, or if with Mr. Bird. But if it's something that you got to do or you need to do, then if you bring up a non-agenda item, you got to make a motion to amend the agenda to take that item up and you receive public comment.
Yeah, I just know Mr. Pfeifer likes to speak quite regular and he is a taxpayer, you know, and I understand, you know, he likes to speak his piece.
Yes, sir. And so the feeling of the board is to have one or the other alternative so that if the board wants to take action during the same meeting with, when the new item's brought up to the agenda, you can, you just have to take additional public comment. Or the board will have the option of just putting that issue or that matter on a future agenda that.
I think if it's a very complicated issue, you go on to the next meeting's agenda, which gives you time to do research, which gives you time to bring yourself more up to speed, such as the oil collection thing. Everybody's in fa, in favor of trying to improve the environment. That's not a very controversial issue. With, with land acquisition, with Mr. Bird told a different story. We made, Mr. Lockley made a motion, we took it up on the next agenda meeting, which I was fine. I like it, I like it kind of way we got it. So if there's something that you need to take up at this particular meeting, you can. If not, if it's a controversial issue, then you would make a motion to put it on the next agenda. I kind of like it this way it is.
I'd make a motion to stay like, like it is.
You make an motion to accept this?
Yeah, like he, like he got it.
Public comment, adopting the policy, the way you, you're making a motion Public comment, adopting the policy, the way you, you making a motion to adopt the public comment policy as written by the attorney?
With this additional change that the board has just been discussing, that Commissioner Jones brought up, because what I'm, what I am reading from the board is you want the ability, if a commissioner, for example, the issue Commissioner Jones brought up today on the waste oil containers, it's not on the agenda, but if the board, say at some future meeting wants to take up a similar issue, then you have a motion to amend the agenda, have discussion on that item, take additional public comment, and then take board action. Or if the board so chooses that it's a complicated issue, and you don't want to take action at that same meeting, you would just put that matter on a future agenda.
That's correct.
That's the note that I have. Are there any other questions that the board has about this public comment policy?
I don't have any questions, I got some statements.
I got a statement, too. I want to just say that I agree with you, Michael, when you put that in there, about the three minutes for the person, five minutes if you represent, if you represent an organization or something. Because if you look at all the state agencies, that's how they do, they've got a red, a yellow, and a red, I mean, a red, yellow, and green light. You go, when it gets to about thirty seconds before you're through, that yellow light will come on, and then it's red, you stop, you know? So, I mean, I like that, that's what all the state agencies that I've ever been in contact with, and I've been in contact with about them, that's all they've ever done, so.
You use a light.
No, not use a light.
That's what they do.
But, yeah, yeah.
My comments were, and your comment is well-taken, Commissioner Sanders, but having read the two policies from Gulf County, Walco has prevented, has sent by, sent by, in by Mr. Pfeiffer, that's one of the things that I saw in there that we don't currently do, is allow them five minutes for the organization if you're representing an organization. But when you represent an organization, only one person can speak for that organization. You can't have, for lack of better terms, you can't have four people speaking for after if Mr. Pfeiffer's taking five minutes representing that organization. Having said that, I read both of those policies, Mr. Pfeiffer, and I'm not looking for comment, but I read both of those, and a lot of it's not, no, it's not a whole lot's different to what Franklin County does. Every county's a little different. And if you'll research the other fifty-nine counties, Walco, Gulf, Franklin, B three, yeah, whether sixty-seven counties, if you research the others, you'll see a whole lot of other different policies. One of them was citizens to be heard. We call it public comment period. I mean, I read all that and took all that into consideration when we're, and I'd already advised Mr. Schuler that I thought the five minutes ought to be in there if you speak. So, I mean, I read all that and took all that into consideration that you presented. When I was looking at it and making recommendations to the attorney of how we needed to proceed, but it's not a whole lot's different than, what it says, most of the policies say the public should have an ability to comment before the board takes action. I think Florida statute says that also. We're doing that, we're trying to get these agendas out earlier so you know what's coming before this board, so that you have the ability to make comments on it, even though this is the thing you were talking about during the public comments now it's come up. But your comments are taken, whether you think they are or not, and they're being looked at, and they're being looked at, the policy being formed by this board. But it's hard to compare Franklin County to every other county in Florida, vice versa. Every other county in Florida wouldn't be compared to Franklin County. I mean, boards operate a little bit differently, and I think we are complying with the spirit of the law, and I think we are complying with the statute. If I didn't, county attorney would be in trouble, because then I would lose confidence that he's not advising the board properly, and I have no reason to believe that he's not advising this board properly or giving us the correct advice, which is what he, he's not a policy, he does not set policy, he advises the board, that's his job. Our job here is to set policy. Mr. Marone don't set policy, the clerk don't set policy, this board sets policy. But to, and you have to understand that there's a lot of, a lot of stuff. Our staff members, our attorney, our administrator, our clerk, we're all involved in a lot of different things. Decisions made by this board are not made only by the board. They're getting a lot of recommendations, they're getting a lot of insight, they're looking at a lot of different perspectives on different things, and then the board has to set policy. That's what the board does. And that's what we do. And we've obviously been doing a pretty good job, because some of us have been sitting up here for quite a few years, and the public is satisfied, the general public is satisfied with the way we conduct ourselves and the way we try to help the people of Franklin County.
Look around the room.
Setting policies and everything else, so, anyway. Yes, sir.
What I can't understand is, it's an organization that they're missing. Every meeting, the commission doing something wrong. I never seen it in sixteen, fourteen years, they get up there and say that commission did something right. So, it doesn't bother me, you know? Hey, I'm going to be wrong whether I do it right or not.
We all make mistakes, and everybody in the human race makes mistakes.
Well, and I'm going to say one big one, I was going to keep my mouth shut, but I'm going to say one big one. I've been sitting here twenty years, and I've been hearing it all for twenty years, well, sixteen of them, sixteen of them that we get reminded from every now and then, and I'm going to say, because I don't want no comment back to me either, Mr. Chairman, but I'm going to say, there was an individual commission seat, District T, that was open to the public, and if people thought that they had a good enough idea to come in here and, and bring it on, they would file to run. You know what I'm saying? Mr. Pfeiffer had the opportunity right there to file. He's got all these good ideas, he didn't file. You know what I'm saying? But I'm going to tell you something, I was okay until back in December, and I'm going to tell a little bit of it, and then we're going to go on, because I'm going to go eat. But back in December, I sat there and talked to Mr. Pfeiffer and told him, "He's come right here," and I'm going, I'm going to tell you how, what, I told him, I said, "We can agree to disagree, but walk away friends." You remember that, Smokey? And then the next week or two, the big items in the newspaper was, "Who's the aristocrat of, the real aristocrats of Franklin County?" I have not said one word about this, but I'm fixing to say it. My family was a hundred and eighty years in this county. My family founded the eastern part of it. Caravelle was founded by my family, yet Bio was founded by my family. I'm not an aristocrat, I have worked hard every day of my life, struggled at some point, but by the grace of God, I was able to make it. And you know what? I think on this board, we have a pretty good board. Twenty years I've been sitting up here, and our room, our room has only been filled up when there's been the truth distorted in the public. That's the only time. And every one of these commissioners have been, I don't know if Mr. Jones has, but I know I have, Parrish has, Commissioner Parrish has, and I know Mr. Lockley has, have been put down, pushed aside, reported to the state, and everything else, not have nothing come through. So, Mr. Pfeiffer, I'm going to tell you, if you wanted to change, that is good thing, because you've got good ideas, but you are not going to be embraced when you are distorting the truth to fit your needs and your desires to make this board look bad, because if this board was such a bad board, that this room would be filled up. And that's just a little preview of what I'm going, because I got until November, and like I said, and I am tired of this board being attacked. If we're not attacked by public comment, we're attacked by this, we're attacked by the other. And then there's been certain things that's happened up on this board that have never ever been brought to light or said anything about it. But, yeah, I'm done, I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a motion and a second report to the department?
Second.
We have a motion with no second?
We don't have a second.
Mr. Lockley made the motion, Mr. Sanders made the second.
I made motion.
You made the motion.
Uh-huh.
Who made the motion, Mike?
Mr. Lockley.
Mr. Lockley done made the motion.
Oh, okay, second.
Before I started talking, you started talking.
Okay.
Commissioner, Commissioner Lockley made the motion, Commissioner Sanders made the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, this is not on my report, it's just that it does require any action by the board, but just for the board's information, there's a mediation scheduled in the lawsuit with Walter Armstead on Monday, August thirteenth, and pursuant to the rules of civil procedure, Mr. Marone will be present on your behalf with the full authority to negotiate on your behalf in return with a recommendation if we can settle the case.
Second.
No action required.
You want me to act?
No action.
No action required.
Well, I was wanting them to settle it.
No action was informed of the board. Commissioners, I realize more and more that a lot of paper is being wasted with these agenda packets that we're doing, and since we got on board with this, I want to try something for a little while, see how it works. If you guys get complaints, let me know. Instead of asking the clerk's office to print all these packets that we do, I'm going to ask them just to print the front page of the agenda. I'm going to include all the backup documents on two binders similar to this in the back of the room. If someone attends the meeting and they want something printed, they could run next door, and one of the ladies in that office will print it for them. Let's take Howard's report, commissioners, it's almost seven, nine pages sometimes. People actually pay attention to Howard's report, and we're just going through a whole lot of paper doing this. And besides that, with this new policy, we're forced to put it online Thursday. With that, most people could download it to their tablets or their electronic devices.
Or print it out themselves.
Or print it out themselves. But we'll print it for them if they want a specific, you know, most, and then the P&amp;Z reports are going up on the screen so that everybody gets to see the maps on what we're talking about. So, I'm going to try for a little while, see how it works out, and I'll let you guys know. If you get any feedback, positive or negative, let me know, and we'll move on.
Mike, you do understand the policy just adopted by the board, that all this stuff has to, you have to get your information on Thursday, and it has to be out there on Friday to allow the public time to access this stuff, and allows, I've said it from day one, allows me a chance to access it every weekend, so if there's something-
Right.
Then you got Monday, all day Monday that you can get, figure out, you know, maybe I didn't know about this, or clarification, you see what I'm saying? But if you don't get this stuff out, and the commissioners don't have it, then we can't react on Mondays to get clarification on whether it's an item in the bills or item in the minutes or whatever.
It's an excellent discipline.
So, I mean, it's going to require a lot of dedication to get the information out ahead of time.
Discipline, yeah.
Discipline.
It's a great tool, I like it, and I think it's a good thing, and I'm just, in accordance with that, I'm also doing this to see if, you know, we save paper but still provide the information to the public that's needed.
Ma'am, you got it?
I was just misunderstanding, but I think we're already cleared it up. It'll still be out there online, the entire package.
Correct, but we just got to get it out there earlier. Sometimes, Michael, you get behind, and it might not come out the Monday. Well, that can't happen if we're going to allow, or utilize this public comment policy,